7:00 next, public announcements, recognition, upcoming events.
We'll start, obviously, we started school last Tuesday and are now getting into our first full week in back in session with students. Right before we started, we had open houses at Levi, Tris, and McKenna since our last board meeting. Those were all Thursday, the 28th. We also had a pretty good turnout last Sunday, this past Sunday for the community corn roast. I did want to give a shout out to Mr. Qualheim, Ms. Vance, and then to Mrs. Lady, the band director. The band was asked to be there to do the National Anthem, and then they also played the school song, and then it did a couple pep band numbers. It was great to have them, their parents there to start things off, and they did a great job. FFA uses that for a fundraiser. They help with the corn, which is free, but then they also have brats and burgers and things like that that are donated, and then they get the profits from that. So it was a great community event on Sunday. This Saturday is the Athletic Hall of Fame Ceremony, the induction ceremony for 2025. A number of well-deserving candidates are going to go in on Saturday night. It starts at 5:30. Things will really get kicking in about 7 o'clock. It includes two boys cross-country teams from 1995 and 1996. We have a former coach, Kayla Klitzman, Steve Kundert, and then Sandy Spanton Nelson, one of our former board members as well, going in that night. With Griffin here running the meeting online, we do have National IT Professionals Day next week, so we'll recognize Griffin and the TC staff and what they do for our district, so thanks to them. A community event, we also have Creek Fest a week from Saturday. Hopefully, the weather's a little bit better than it was last year when it was pretty much rained out. It brings in a lot of people. And then what we set up last board meeting on the 22nd, so only less than two weeks away. Talked to our principals today. We are ready for the board walkthroughs, so that'll be again on Monday, the 22nd in the morning. And we've got about 45 minutes in each building, starting with Levi, moving to Tris, and the middle school and high school. We will have lunch at the high school, so if you do want to taste what food service and totter provides for our students, we can do that afterwards. The principals know that they'll take you around to some of the highlights of the building, maybe new programming that we have for this year. And then finally, if there are any facility needs, they'll show those to you as well. And then as we go, if you have questions or other things that you want to see, they can take you around, and then we'll move from building to building. So I think we've got four confirmed. If anybody else can make it, great, but we realize that you're all very busy people, so start to the school year.
Any other announcements or upcoming events, recognitions? Not, is there any public presentations? Moving on to introduction of new staff.
The room is full tonight. I did tell some people where you sit, if you want to be on camera or not on camera. So welcome to our new staff. I don't know if the principals have an order here, but before they get started, I just want to say, this year in particular, I heard more from not only our directors, but our principals. When they hired somebody about strong pools, great candidates, they were very excited about the new staff that we're bringing in. And so you're going to see a lot of them tonight, so I will pass it over to the principals. It looks like we're going in age group.
All right, if I could have my, our new staff that are working at Levi come on over here, so you are on camera for this part. All of our watchers at home. All right, I'm going to start while they're coming up with Jessica Valsam, who is right here. Maybe you just want to give a voice saying who you are. Jessica is a new 4K teacher in the district, and during her junior year, oh, let me pause. I asked everyone to share a fun fact with me because you already have the write-ups on them, so I figured learning something fun and interesting about them might add to tonight for you. So during her junior year of college, she spent the summer interning at Walt Disney World in Florida as a merchant in Animal Kingdom. At the end of the summer, she called her mom to let her know she was quitting teacher education to stay at Disney and perform at Tinkerbell. Her mom quickly, and not so subtly, told her she was coming home and finishing school, and then perhaps she could go back. She's very thankful, as are we, that she, her mom encouraged her to stay and that she's able to be a teacher in kindergarten and now in 4K. Welcome, Jessica. Next on the list is Carrie Burke-Culter. Carrie is a new kindergarten teacher. She is an Evansville graduate, has three children in the district, one who already graduated from Evansville, a senior and a seventh grader, and she is well-known in Evansville as she was previously a 4K teacher. Moving on down the line to Kennedy Bush, our new kindergarten teacher as well. She is also an Evansville alumni, class of 2020, and was also a consistent substitute for Levi Leonard. So her transition was quite smooth moving into that position. Then we have Caitlin Colleen, who is a new speech and language pathologist. Caitlin attended UW Madison for her bachelor's and UW Milwaukee for her master's. She did share with me that she loves cats and has two that are at home and are best friends. Then we have Molly Dempsey. I got smart and changed my order, going in your order now. Molly Dempsey is a special education teacher. She primarily works with kindergarten special ed this year. She was previously a 4K teacher and prior to that was a 4K special ed teacher. Molly loves to travel and has spent all 50 capitals of the United States. Then we have Erin Taylor. She is our new instructional coach. She is K5. So I do share some of these awesome people that I got to hire. Erin was a flugelhorn player in the UW Madison marching band for five years. She is starting her 19th year in education. She taught kindergarten for 13 years and was a virtual 4K through second grade teacher for five years. She has her master's degree in curriculum and instruction and has just begun the reading 316 certification through UW Stevens Point. Then we have Brittany King. She was previously a first grade teacher. You also might be wondering who is Brittany King, because when we hired her, she was Brittany Wilkie. She was married over the summer in July and is now Brittany King. Also, I have Ellen.
I just sent it to you, so maybe.
She is a district-wide nurse, which is why she might be confused as to whether or not she was supposed to come up here. Not just Levi, but she is supporting Levi quite a bit with our littles, as that tends to be where we need the most support. So Ellen's fun fact is that she has been to Belize 15 times on trips with a nonprofit group she helped to create. Another thing that's super impressive about Ellen is she built the nursing program in her previous district, so welcome.
All right, I'm just going to quickly share some folks that couldn't make it tonight, and then I will share the two people that were able to come. I don't have as many as Jess. So I have Melissa Shipp. She joined us as a third grade teacher. We had a lot of applicants for our positions. We had a third grade and a fourth grade, and lots of applicants. And Melissa came with a lot of strong experience. She was a kindergarten teacher mostly, but she has lots of experience in literacy, and we really thought that she would bring a strong base. She also had, did a lot of work with ACT 20 at her old school district and led a lot of professional learning around data-driven instruction. So we're really happy that Melissa joined us. She also has a couple of kids in the district and lives here. And then Sue Gibney, she was a long-term substitute for us last year and filled in for a teacher, which was wonderful and did a great job. So we were super excited to be able to keep her as a special education teacher for our fifth grade. She's doing a fabulous job. Then we also have Jessica Keen. She joined us as a third grade special education teacher. And then I have Jenna Sinkwild. So she's getting married, so her kids are calling her Wild. Oh, and calling her Mrs. Wild. Sorry. Jenna is a first-year teacher, and like I said, we had a lot of applicants, so we had a lot of people with lots of experience. But the team, and it wasn't even just me, the team was just very excited after we interviewed Jenna, and they said, let's go with this new teacher. She has great enthusiasm, and she's been bringing a lot of great ideas and new spirit to the school. And she has an opportunity she's going to share with us.
An opportunity to buy a farm.
She has promised us, so now it's on record that she's not.
I'm not leaving. I'm staying.
It is a little distant, but she claims to look dry. And then we have Maggie Settis-Rum, and she joined us as our music teacher. And we had actually interviewed Maggie earlier in the year when we were looking for a music teacher, but Maggie was working somewhere else and just really felt committed, which was a trait that, of course, we thought was fabulous, because we want that out of a staff member as well. So we were able to re-interview people in the spring, and Maggie accepted the position, so we were super happy to have Maggie. And Maggie did some summer professional learning that I asked her to just quickly share with you.
Yeah, so in June, I went to Iowa where I took World Music Drumming Level 1. And I had a few instructors. One of them, well, in Level 1, there's a couple of folks who teach the basics, and then I would receive some like masterclass instruction and just learning about the culture of a master drummer from Ghana named Sowa. And so I learned about, about how music is there, what the language is like, how the language, like, one word can mean so many different things depending on the inflection of your voice and how the drums are like an outlet of, like, you can make different sounds on the drum, and depending on how you play it, the inflection can come through the drum where, like, people can understand the message that is trying to be presented through that. And so it was really interesting, and I hope to continue the training. And as I do, I will get more experiences with Sowa from Ghana. And so, yeah, I dove into just the basic Level 1 beginning, and it was a great experience for getting to play in some like Latin, Afro-Cuban-style music and African-style music, and just getting to experience those ensembles and the instrumentation and what it's like to be in that kind of group and getting to reflect on what, what the instructors were doing to extend a piece and add variations and do lots of cool things. Sparked a lot of ideas for me and I think equipped me well for helping me to better see what I can do with the music in concert settings and in ensemble. And so I'm excited to continue learning and apply what I've been learning so far.
Good evening. We have two new staff members at the middle school, brand-new to the district. We also have Austin Rupiper, who is from another building, over to us to join Jordan with sixth grade, so I wanted to mention that as well. Right here to my left is Tim Bragg. So Tim comes to us from Texas. He had lived in Wisconsin, moved to Texas for job reasons, and is able to be back. He's excited to be back in Wisconsin along with his two kids. Our eighth graders are already trying to recruit his daughter to come to J.C. McKenna, so they'll keep working on them. Four years of experience, and with those four years of experience, I'll be in special education. So it's very nice to have some of those learning opportunities for him and I to talk about what's different from Wisconsin versus Texas and things as well. And another interesting fact that I just learned today is he knows how to beatbox. I'm not going to ask him to do it now because that's a lot of pressure, but at some point, maybe you'll see him, because I know that Ms. Propper is going to rope him into a concert at some point. So I'll leave that to her, but welcome to you, Tim. And then Jordan Kahoot. So Jordan Kahoot is the other sixth-grade special education teacher, and he comes to us with four years of experience as well, but he was in the general classroom with younger kids and some experience at middle school too. So he's been a wonderful addition because he understands that transition into middle school and understands how kids think of things differently, and extra support in a variety of reasons or occasions. He loves being outdoors, hiking, running, walking his dogs and anything outdoors. That is something that Jordan appreciates, and so much so that he proposed over the summer outside, and she said yes, and he is super excited to be really engaged. So welcome, Jordan and Tim.
I'll do my couple who aren't here. I have Kate. I'm going to go fairly quick. And what I asked them is, because you all had the bios, is I asked them what has been something enjoyable or something that they have enjoyed since joining the staff or the district here. So I'll start with Katie. Katie Cap is one of our new science teachers. She's not here. And I will be honest, she gave me a paragraph, and I had to look up what one of the words meant in that paragraph because it was very scientific, so I'm not going to read all of that because it's shorter. But she said what she has enjoyed most so far at EHS is getting to know the students and helping them to cultivate the kind of classroom environment that supports their learning goals, ambitions, and academic needs. And she thanks to everyone for the tremendous support network available to both the staff and students at EHS. And all the students are coming into her classroom with a foundational sense of stability from which point they can grow. And she had like three more sentences with some more scientific stuff that I'll leave out, but you can talk to her about that. So the other one who was not here is Shelby. So Shelby Jones, he is one of our new, he's our new Fayette teacher. When I asked him kind of what he has been enjoying since joining the district, he said it's been a very smooth and enjoyable transition. He has loved getting to know all the students and making connections with fellow staff members. He has enjoyed being involved with the football staff and after school is looking, with the football staff and is also looking forward to getting involved with the wrestling this winter. He has said it is, Evansville is quickly becoming his home, so he has been getting connected all over the place. So now we'll go in order here. So it's Luke, and it's Pioski. Did I say it right? I'm still making sure I can say that right. So Luke said one of the things he has enjoyed most since coming to Evansville is getting to know his colleagues. And he said he especially has been enjoying the lunchtime trivia with the other staff members when they eat lunch. And you have Jimmy Schultz. You would probably see him as James on the thing, but he goes by Jimmy. Jimmy said that he has enjoyed getting to know his colleagues and the students at EHS, and they successfully changed oil in my Jeep this week, so they were doing a good job getting right at it. So thank you, Jimmy, and students there. Jeff Willauer, next one. He's also one of our new tech ed teachers. He had said he is thankful for everyone that has been helpful in getting the tech ed department everything they need to be successful. I also, he has a technique with cups that he uses in his classroom that I had never seen before. So it is something that now I stop and help the kids remember where their cups are supposed to be every once in a while, so they can get in that habit of getting there. So next is Savannah Betten. Savannah is our choir teacher. She had said she has had a blast prepping our incredibly talented students in choir for their fall performances. And I also know she has already added a new trip for them that they are going to be going on, I believe, soon. Yep, I'm working on that today, so I was like, I hope it's still going. So it's just something that they're able to do that we haven't done in the past, that I've heard some students talk about that they're very excited about. Next is Hannah Wellness. I almost always say, you know, gone all the time. So Hannah is an Evansville graduate as well. She is our school-to-career coordinator, along with Linda Gard. And she had said she has enjoyed connecting and building relationships with students as a career counselor. One interesting fact, which I knew some of this, but she informed me more today, she's around a lot of Phils and Phillips in her life. And so I talked to her about that story because I learned more and I even knew her husband's family a little bit growing up. So there is just some more there that I wasn't aware of. It made me smile. So that's Hannah. And next, we have our last one is Hillary Best. So Hillary is one of our new science teachers. What she has enjoyed the most is getting to know the students in her courses and gearing up for her first few games of seventh-grade volleyball, because she's coaching seventh-grade volleyball, and hanging out with the science team at lunchtime. I know our science department does a great job. I feel like they eat lunch together almost every day and probably talk about science things. So that's a news faculty. That's welcome.
While we appreciate you all being here, we realize you've already taught for a full day. So this would be the transition, if you're not going to stay with the meeting, to exit. Again, no pressure if you want to stay, but. Thank you so much for being here.
All right, next is the High School Board Representatives Report.
Jeff, I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything, but as Dan and Tessa come up, first of all, they've got a great introduction. We wanted them to be able to introduce themselves. For tonight, there's not a whole lot to report on so far in the school year. As soon as I saw their names, I thought, weren't they the pumpkin queen? But there's a lot of connections that the two of them have together, so they'll talk a little bit about that. All right.
So Daniel Tessa. I know I saw Daniel breathe really big, I have relief when he saw the other people leave, so. I need to go now. There's people for the first time.
So hi, we're the school board representatives. I was going to talk a little bit about ourselves. So I'm Tessa Teed. I just started my senior year, honestly. So exciting. I have been involved in many extracurricular activities throughout my high school career. For sports, I do golf and cross-country in the fall, and then I do soccer in the spring. And then personally, clubs and stuff, I am NHS, where I'm the president, student council, where I've been class president for four years, FBLA, Round Treasure, and Green Team. I enjoy doing my sports, which I am so ready. I want to be a school board representative to learn all about the things that happen throughout our district because there's just so many that I see and highlight them for everyone to see. I'm looking forward to my time as representative, and I can't wait for the trophies. Thank you.
Tessa, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So your older sister a board rep?
She was, yeah, Ashley.
I know there's another connection there.
I'm Daniel Harnick. I am also a senior, as you have to be. And I am currently involved in student council, FBLA, and forensics in student council. I am vice president of all of it, like executive, and then also vice president of my class. I joined the track team last year for the first time. It's the first sport I've ever played since first grade, baseball, but did I really play? My mom tells me I pick dandelions. I don't like dandelions, so who knows? I currently work at Greenwood State Bank, Woodman's, and Subway. I've also been an election worker for the city of Evansville. And then the reason I applied to be a school board member or representative is because I talked to Tatum and Ally. I'm close friends with both of them, and they were last year's representatives. And hearing from them and their experiences, I just thought that this was really a good thing, that like getting to see like students' perspective in the schools, all of them, because we have, we've been to all of them, is really important because not all of you might have went here and you don't really see like the students' perspective. So I felt it was very important for like you to get our perspective as well. Oh, and then there's our next slide.
We actually do a lot together, which is kind of funny, as much we are pumpkin queen together, which is kind of fun. And then president and vice president of our class, as we both mentioned, now we're school board representatives. So we work very well together. We're really excited to start this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next will be the district administrators update.
So I've reported out to the board previously about Methodize. And Methodize is a program that we're using now in flex time at the high school that helps with ACT prep. I won't go into a great amount of detail, but what it guarantees is there's a specific program. It usually includes a lesson and about 20 minutes per day. And if you were to do that, during the weekdays, 20 minutes a day with a lesson over about an 18-week period, they do see, and they've got this documented, about a three-point improvement in your total or overall score. And so that was something that other districts, myself have used in the past, that now EHS is using, and we're excited about it. The reason that I bring it up now is just this week, Tuesday, and then again tomorrow at the high school, the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students took two portions of the pre-ACT. They'll take the next two portions on Thursday in what's really a kind of delayed start schedule. They're at school at 8:00, but then they go through these two portions of the test before they move on with the rest of their schedule. So that's going to do two things. It's going to give our students in just a few weeks early baseline data and scores that they'll know how they're doing. And then you'll have kind of the post-test in the spring when they take the pre-ACT again or the ACT as juniors. The other thing that it does is it provides our staff with all kinds of information between that and then what the staff is also going to see through Methodize. So anytime that students start out with their what are called warm-ups, it's kind of like a general introduction to that topic, whether it's English, math, reading, or science, and then they go through their lesson. The staff can see those results, and it informs their instruction, what are they doing well with, what are they struggling with that we can then look at and hopefully try to improve and build their instruction toward that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we've had, we've had John Graff in from CSU 6. And one of the things that he talked about, and it's actually going to be in one of my first newsletters, our district newsletters this year, is effect size. So John Addy is a huge educational researcher, and he talks about effect size. So what has the greatest impact on student learning? And one of the things that they do talk about that in recent years, I think, some countries have gotten away with is simple practice, right? Practicing those specific skills over and over again. And in this case, John Graff had talked about four to six attempts on a specific skill. And so that's what Methodize does, and then again, our staff will have that information and hopefully be able to help improve their instruction, not teaching toward the test, but just seeing where are our students struggling, where are their weaknesses, and how can we hope to build them up. So speaking of John Graff, in terms of professional development, he did help the staff as kind of prefacing their data. So before they went into their data, especially at the middle and high school, as we returned in August, what they're looking for and then what they may be concentrating on. So what Mark and the principals and then John Graff have really dug into and will continue to this year is looking at what kinds of questions they're asking on the forward, the pre-ACT and the ACT. Again, not necessarily teaching toward the task, but if you're better prepared and you know what kinds of things are going to be asked of you, you're going to have that confidence going into it. And so there's different depth of knowledge questions. There's one through four. Usually, they don't ask hardly any number one, the easiest questions. Almost all of them are concentrated in two and three, and they say, don't even worry about four. So the other thing that you'll see at the bottom, which our staff now has all of these, are heat maps. And really what it means is how many of what kinds of questions are asked in your subject matter. So again, staff can better prepare their students for this. The way that I look at all of these tests, forward, pre-ACT, and ACT, is that they're giving you sort of the parameters or rules to the expectation. And if we have that information, why aren't we pushing more into that and preparing as best we can? Because obviously, it's going to make our staff feel better that they're preparing our students. We get better scores out of the students and their confidence, that their scores are going up. And of course, parents, when they see those results from, especially at the high school now, where they started the school year in September and where they'll end up in April. The other thing which I thought was fantastic, I know Mark and I have talked a little bit about this, is there's a lot of different tools that you could use between Gemini, Brisk, in this case, with John Graff and his presentation. All of our staff right now have a free opportunity to use Diffit. And one of the things that you can do, and I know even like our tech ed teachers at the high school were using this, is you can put in this AI platform, give me standardized test questions on a specific topic, and it will generate those for you so that there's some efficiency to it, but then you're not having to recreate things. It'll give you some ideas, at least starters, of where you can begin that journey with your students. So we're excited about looking at that and really spending a lot of time with our students. I think they're going to find, especially in year one, the growth that they can make. And once we see that growth continuing on into the future, to really turn our scores around, it's important that our scores are good, not only for our students when they're, you know, wanting to go on after high school, whether it's into the workforce or into colleges and universities, even in the workforce. They want to see that you're career-ready. They want to see that you're career-ready at this point for apprenticeships and other things. But also, again, to make sure that parents see the return on the investment of what they're paying in taxes and a referendum. And then for our staff to really see like, this is how we're going to use this information to better instruction. So we're excited about what we're getting into this year and how we can take it to another level in years to come.
One of the questions I had about this whole package deal here regarded more to the point of, are we using this to find out if any of the specifics, what they call codes, are missed in our current curriculum?
Yeah, that's a great question, because it does identify that, Melissa. So when we have, when they get the pre-ACT results back, which will then be loaded up in the NextPath and staff can see that, there will be, hey, our students are struggling in a specific area. And then for those content area teachers, especially math, science, and English, it is an eye-opener to say, boy, we really do, we thought we spent enough time on this topic, or we thought we were covering this, but obviously, we're not doing a good enough job. We need to look in the mirror and go back to that and either reteach or change what we're teaching. So it certainly does do that. Great question.
Yeah, to me, that's like, I feel like the evaluation of one specific test might be a little... I'd like to see this kind of analysis of like five years' worth of tests to see if it changes over time. And then you can get like a map of what is the entire, for each grade level, what is the entire codes, what do they call them, content areas that are covered in each grade level for that specific topic? Because to me, that's the important, you know, we give a little lip service to meet the state standards. Yes, but so much at state regarding the test results. Really need to make sure that the specific curriculum.
I'll give you an example of that. What I found in my past too is, let's take math, for example. These were higher-level math students, and so these were advanced placement teachers that were getting results back on this and said, why are our best math students struggling in geometry? And they, when they started to think about that, they said, well, these students haven't had geometry in probably four or five years. And so just things like bell ringer activities, just to refresh them with certain concepts and topics, was an eye-opener again for our staff in that, because they were being more like, boy, they should know this. They've had this. And they're in calculus, but what?
Everything they're learning right now has been built on a new country that they learned four years ago. Yeah, okay.
So with these, the mass practice-focused sessions where you're doing repeated practicing on a specific skill, are we going to be able to see, this is kind of tied to Melissa's question, I guess, because I, I'm curious, both with how it ties into the curriculum, but also just so that we, but also parents, could know what are the specific skills that we're really focusing on? So that, you know, if in fourth grade, these kids are really getting a lot of focus on that, we would hope that we would know, you know, this batch of kids got this really deliberate training in this particular skill. We know what that skill is, not, we don't have to look it up through a code and everything.
So.
I guess my question is.
Your question then?
My question is like, will we be able to see and be able to share with parents kind of a translation of what those skills are?
Like to reinforce it or?
Sure, yeah. One of the things actually Mark and I have been trying to work with, actually like in the last two weeks with NextPath, is when we get that information in, are we going to be able to break down the standardized test by specific skills? And we did have a refresher with NextPath. It's a little bit different than our old platform that we used to. But you can see by, by, let's just use in this case, reading. And you can go into your reading scores. You can look at specific skills within reading. And then where you can even look at which students are in the lowest categories. You then can click on that, see which students they are. And so teachers will be able to see, here are our students struggling in certain things. The other thing that John Graff provided is you may have students, or even advanced students, but there are some anomalies there where in specific skill areas, they really struggle, which is then, are we not teaching that specific skill? Are we finding trends in that? So I do think over time that will, that will come out, and we can share that with parents. And again, staff should be able to identify, here's where we know we're really struggling. The way that I've always thought about it is if they've given you the rules to the game, let's use those to our advantage to best prepare our kids. In terms of community relationships, I mentioned this before last meeting with Culvers, but I just, again, wanted to thank them. They've just been so generous and have been great community partners already. I hadn't mentioned Exit Realty. They had contacted Page and said, well, we'd like to do a school supply drive. And we said, well, we get a lot of school supplies. Sometimes, though, they're not what we can really use. So we gave them very specific things. And today, actually, Jess and Barb came back with things that you might think, like Kleenex backpacks, Post-it notes, pens, pencils, Clorox wipes, those kinds of things that are really helpful in the classroom. So thank you to them as well. And I don't think she probably gets enough attention, but Amy Flone is fantastic with the wear. She does all that school supply drive, and we really don't see a lot of that that she's doing outside of our system. But then with our counselors, our counselors are helping to identify students that would be part of the snack packers. And so it's a very subtle program where students that may be on free and reduced lunch, they put things in their backpack or their locker. Nobody knows about that. They can take them home or have them at school, and it's a great way to help our families that struggle. So thanks for Amy for that. And one more update, Erica has been working on how the district would go about establishing a Fund 80. It won't happen this year, because it's going to have to happen in annual meeting, and we're not prepared for that. But at some point, we would like to start that. I have met with two city council members and Jason Sargent from the city. They've been good partners. They want to find out how we can get the youth center started back. Where they struggle is sort of the programming of things. They may or may not have a building, but at some point, I think we could work jointly with that. The other topic that I just want to broach now that could be part of Fund 80 is a school resource officer that would be shared between the city and the district. If that's something that the board would want to pursue, and Fund 80 would be a way to help fund that, that would not come out of Fund 10, our general fund. So those are on the horizon again. You'll probably hear more about that in the next year. We have our annual meeting in October, next month. It's just too soon to start that, but Eric's getting all the information from the Department of Public Instruction about how you start that. He and I have both worked with them, but we've never actually had to start the fund.
What is the, the youth center, what's the build, what's the update on the building?
Sure. So when we first started to look into this, there was a thought that a corporation here in town might donate a building. We have been, at least no update on that. The city does, to my understanding from these three individuals, have some money in future budgets for a building, whether it's where it is now, near the middle school, and basically tearing down and rebuilding that.
At least, as long as we're not reusing that whenever.
Right, right. The nice part about that is that a youth center, at least in Evansville, is really critical to middle school students because they're aged out of daycare, but they can't drive. And so there is that time, you know, between like three and five, five-thirty or six even, where their parents haven't gotten home from work, where's a safe place that they can go? So that location is great, but not how it's currently set up. So what they're interested in is if the city had the building, could the district through Fund 80 provide the programming? So hire a director, maybe even one of our staff members that would be interested in doing this after school. They're paid through that fund and then provide all the programming. What the city has done has kept it pretty short and sweet during the school year, on weekdays. Again, let's say three to five or three to six, and that's the end of that program. And we could mirror something like that, and again, have not control over that, but able to help the community to bring that back, which has now been missing for a while.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So the, let's just say they were to do the building. I'm just thinking with, you know, being in the Boys and Girls Club and doing those, I mean, those buildings were quite large, I guess, should I say, and that space is small. So I guess my, if we were going to do that, my biggest concern would be, how many people can we actually help? When we're talking about being able to pay a salary, so like, is the cost going to outweigh the benefit or the versa? As well as, I was wondering if any, there was this one, there was a talk about program for Future Before, and maybe this was before your time, so I apologize, so for like Girls Inc. Is that coming here?
Yeah, that's not been talked about, at least in part of Fund 80, but could that be something that, you know, a community or a youth center could do? Certainly.
Yeah, and I was only asking because at Goodman, we had, we were the only Madison site that had Girls Inc. And then they took that funding, and then they needed a, they need a school or a nonprofit to be the head of it. And so I remember there was talk of it potentially coming here, and I wasn't sure if that was like the programming, some of that programming we were talking about.
And you can use that in a number of ways. It doesn't just necessarily have to be with kids. For Fund 80, you could put on, and again, Creekside does a fantastic job, but you can put on whatever that need is in the community, whether it's yoga classes, Zumba classes, self-defense classes for kids, anything that there's a need in the community, as long as there's a willing instructor. And the instructor says, here's how much my fee is, and then that fee is assumed by the participants. And let's say he needs a hundred dollars per session. He gets 20 participants. They only have to pay five dollars per session. So the district's not paying for it. It's money in, money out.
Thank you.
You bet. The last thing, and Melissa had mentioned this at the last meeting, we do have what I would say is maybe a more hopeful update on our roofs. You do see some of the roofs on the outbuildings being finally repaired. It's been a while, but those are starting to happen now. But the big money and the big claim is on the roofs at the high school, middle school, and then on this Grove campus. So finally, last Thursday, it's taken months to get to this point. We came up with an agreement that would be suitable both to the district and supposedly to the insurance company about a proposal. So we sent that to them today about how we would redo our roofs. Where the contention still may be in the future, though, is when we, if they approve that and then we go up to bid with those, our thought is that those bids are going to come in much higher than what the insurance company is. And we've pressed the insurance company that when it does come in higher than what you're predicting, you are going to pay for that, correct? And that's where we're hoping that we have more movement, because we'd really like to work, especially on the roofs here on the Grove campus, which are the oldest roofs and the ones that are leaking. I'm sure Barb and Jess are nodding their heads right now with their staff. Like, we even had, you know, like poor Dave L. Bell had waxed several rooms, and then the roof leaks. And then you get, you know, water on the floor, and then the rooms had to be redone, which isn't where we want to be. So we're hopeful. We really, I want the board, anybody listening, to know that Eric and I and Steve, everybody involved in this process, we are really looking at this like we're the caretakers for the district. And what we should get, we will make sure that the district gets, because this could set up the district for the next 20 or 30 years in a really good place where we're not coming to the board and say, hey, we need half a million dollars or a million dollars for the roof. It really should be taken care of, and then we should not have to work, worry about major roof projects in the district for, again, a couple of decades. And if that was the position that we were in, think about where that money could go into student and learning and instead of into.
Building needs.
Exactly, so.
Let's not forget about.
Yeah.
But the.
Which transitions into that last topic there. So we did meet as a finance and facilities committee. And on that 10-year capital maintenance plan, which we didn't have really one in place, we wanted to start to establish this, put on some of the needs for the district. And again, maybe what one person on the committee thinks is a need might not be what everybody thinks is a need. But when we ask the maintenance staff and the principals, like, what do we want to be working on with our facilities in the next decade? These were some of the ideas that came up. And then that group, which again, with the help of Melissa, Mitch, and Seth, we looked at priorities. So a number one was it needs to be done within the next year or two. A two might be, again, three or four years out, a three, five to seven years out. And then a four, it's not a super high priority, but we want to keep it on the list. And so what you'll see there is three major topics that we put as one that we'll be working on. And again, part of that is the referendum, heat pump replacement at the high school. And Eric and I are going to ask about another facilities and finance committee, because we want NAMI to come in and just talk with us about how we move forward with this. And then new controls at Grove campus. So for example, just in the district office this week, I would say some of the rooms were like maybe 60 degrees. And so then Steve has to come in, and in order for him to do anything, he literally has to get up on a ladder into the ceiling to make any changes. What this will help to do, because their pneumatics would change those systems out and really have a better sense of what's happening in certain rooms in Levi and certain rooms in Tris. Now, that doesn't fix the boilers or those sorts of things, but it does let us know how efficient things are running.
In each room, he has to get on a ladder?
In some of those cases, yes. There's dampers. I'll say this carefully, but when NAMI went through every single room in this campus, so in Levi and Tris, they came back and said, there's a lot going on here. It looked like different contractors were trying different things. And so there's some things that, it definitely is a mix and match of different kinds of systems. And so that's why, that'll be a pretty big number. But that's, again, why we wanted to make sure that was part of the referendum and why we've saved so much in Fund 46 to be able to pay for some of those things. And then the last piece that's up there, if you've been to the high school recently and you see all the traffic that comes into the main entry there, there's some issues with concrete. And again, whether it's somebody in a walker, somebody in a walking boot, somebody that's not real stable on their feet, if you've got grandparents coming into volleyball, or wrestling, or basketball, or the play, or the musical, any of those events, that's something that we think we can get fixed, at least that main section, right away, so that it's safe for everybody coming in. And also, much easier to plow and shovel in the wintertime as well.
And that safety issue is also a liability issue.
Exactly, yeah, because you'll see some uneven and then just basically like missing chunks of concrete there as well. Between Melissa, Seth, and Mitch, I'm not sure if there's anything that you wanted to add there, but again, we will want to schedule another meeting in the next couple of weeks to finalize those couple of plans that we have up there and get moving on them, because some of them, although like the heat pumps and the HVAC, those are sort of like winter break, spring break, and then summertime work, because you've got to be able to shut down the building, but you've got to be able to get access to classrooms. But some of these other things we can do, like the concrete could be done in a fairly short part of time when we do have a longer break or some time where there's no students here, so we could work on these right away. And again, part of this is accountability for me, for Eric, for you as a board, to show what we're doing with some of those referendum funds as well.
I have like a two-sided question or two-part question. The first question is insurance pro plan that we had with the previous insurance company is a replacement value, correct?
Correct. So there's an actual cash value, and then once the work is done, and there could be extra damage that was caused, for example, wet insulation or something like that, then you get another amount once the work is finished on top of that.
Okay, all right. And have we clarified with our new insurance company that we have the replacement value?
Yeah, so I'll tell you a little story, and it's a true story, and it's actually kind of sad with the situation that we're in right now. And one of the reasons that we moved to Tricor and EMC. So the same storm that hit Evansville on that Friday, the April 18th, also obviously came on through the Southwest. So Platteville and their school district was affected, not as bad as Evansville, but they still had hail-damaged storm. Tricor and EMC just finished up their entire roofing projects within the last week. And here we are, four months later, in our situation. So we're excited to work with, and actually, our new agent, John Gibson, who's our broker, So we're, we're excited to work with, and actually, our new agent, John Gibson, who's our broker, um, has, uh, been helpful in, in what we should be asking for, what we should be demanding, and guiding us through some of the project that we're working on with our former insurance company.
If, uh, nothing else for, um, Mr. Pairs' report, moving on to principals' reports.
And again, this is just gonna be a brief verbal report, there's a lot going on with our, um, you know, at the, at, at the end of summer, beginning of the school year, so I've just asked the, um, uh, I just asked the principals to provide an update on how our professional development went, um, this fall, start of the school year, uh, to give you an idea of what's to come, and then again, there'll still be three written reports, um, the rest of this year as we go through, so. Are you first again, Jess?
Yep.
First order, one of the
That's actually what I said right before, I said, hi, I didn't listen. Alright, um, in elementary school at the beginning of the year, it's like the best place in the world to be, like, it's, I love it. Um, we're off to a strong start at Levi Leonard. Our first couple of professional, ooh, start that over. Our first couple of professional development days set a super positive tone for the year. I just wanna touch on a couple of the things that we did. So you met Erin Taylor today, she did a fantastic job with staff, and introducing ways she's gonna support staff this year, and highlighting different things that she's available to support. She took this feedback and then is gonna build her schedule around how she can best support staff. So staff really appreciated her starting the year, sharing things, these things with them, and then allowing her to give them the voice of how they would like to use her this year. So it was really cool. You met her tonight, she also plays the football horn. I know this is nothing new for you to hear about, but I wanna share that we are continuing our science of reading training that Mr. Schwartz is always talking about. Uh, staff had dedicated time to complete Cox campus modules, which is what we use for our science of reading training. Many of them did it together and engaged in conversations about how to apply new learning directly to classroom practice. I popped in on second grade for a little bit as they were collaborating that first day, and brainstorming strategies for implementation around oral reading fluency during the fluency module piece. The other topic I wanna touch on would be that we also offer collaboration time, and I just wanna touch on that because it's so huge, right? It makes such a big impact. Uh, professional development kind of concluded with that at Levi Leonard, and so that they were able to take their learning and then collaborate together. This provided opportunities for teachers to ensure a productive and unified start to the school year, which was evident as we rolled out the school year and welcomed students and families. At the elementary level, the beginning of the year focuses on introducing students to school routines and expectations. That is a lot of what we have been doing. For our youngest students, even skills such as how to line up are brand new. Every year I hear four K or kindergarten teachers comment on how they are like, oh, we forgot, we can't just say line up. You'll see many of the rooms when we do the tour have little spots to stand on so that they know what that means. So, teachers also, uh, took time to set up their classrooms for success for students. Um, teachers also support this through morning meetings, and fostering connections and building classroom communities to kick off the year and really spend time building that for students as well, to give them something to look forward to for those students who school's not their thing, you know, but they can look forward to coming in and seeing their friends and those that they've built connections with. It always amazes me how quickly students go from holding on to their parents that first day of school, to finding their new friends just a day or two later. I was sharing an admin team today, the first, first day of school, we had a kiddo who was really struggling leaving mom, and today he ran away without even saying goodbye, and we went from comforting the students to then comforting mom today, as she was having a hard time letting him go. Students are also learning the routines of CKLA and bridges to establish consistency and smooth transitions throughout the day. We go slow at the beginning and really lay out what each section should look like as we're working through lessons, then students are able to predict what's coming every day, which allows it to be more smooth and have less lost instructional time due to those transitions. Finally, I wanna touch on our theme this year, which is be your best. Um, our, at our first little blue assembly, we introduced and reinforced expectations for being kind, safe, and respectful learners, which is what we'll be focusing on as overall rules for the school for the year. Students who are guided and understanding what those expectations looked like in different environments, from the classroom to the playground, to the hallways. Students also met Buzzy the Bee, who is Little Blue's bee buddy, who'll be checking on students throughout the year. Buzzy the Bee joined students at recess that day then, to check on who's being kind and safe, which are our two biggest recess expectations. I wanna thank Mrs. Maderhock, Ms. Bush, Ms. Wallish, Mr. Simonson, and Ms. Hyatt, for their leadership on our PBIS team to help build our theme and plans for this year. The PBIS team stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Team. They did a fantastic job helping build expectation charts, planning PBIS implementation for the year, and producing engaging expectation videos that went out to staff earlier this ye- earlier this week. In these videos, staff modeled what not to do, while the students modeled what they should do, which was fun for the kids to watch. We used our school perception survey data to drive what we were working on, on the PBIS team, so really looking at what staff was saying they needed help with when it came to discipline, and looking at, um, how we can better be proactive in some of those areas. We also looked at parent feedback on that as well, and that's where the kindness piece is really coming from, for our youngest learners. Teachers, um, oh, I didn't finish that. Teachers used the videos to spark that meaningful discussion then, about what it means to be your best in each area of the building, and all of the environments that you're in, in the school. So that allowed for our consistent expectations for students, and consistent steps that are gonna be taken when expectations aren't followed, so that that's not a surprise for students, and they're aware of what they're supposed to be doing. So I'll end with, I truly believe this is going to be a great year at Levi Leonard. Staff have brought really creative ideas and positive attitudes to help increase student learning this year, I'm super excited to see what the year brings.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
Did you, and I'm, and I, I apologize if I'm forgetting when you came in, did you see a big difference in this year's, um, teachers', like, professional development compared to last year's when they were trying to like learn everything, did they feel better? Like, how are we feeling this year going in, cause I know that was a big feeling, like, are we good, are we feeling good?
That is a really good question, I did actually ask teachers that question too, cause I felt it last year, it's a different vibe this year. That's not professional, but that's my understanding. Last year, a lot just came at once, we weren't anticipating Act Twenty. We knew CKLA was coming, we weren't anticipating the quick turnaround for Cox campus training that had to happen. So in our minds, we thought we were rolling out this new curriculum, and then we found out we had to add these other two items into it, and that was a lot. And I really appreciate the staff stepping up last year, rising to the occasion. This year, without that CKLA being, not being new, and Ca- Cox campus being something we've already got a handle on, I think it felt a lot better. I actually had a couple of staff members come and thank the admin team for doing such a great job planning out PD this year with having PD, and then a work time, PD, and then work time, so.
I really appreciate that, especially finding that collaboration time, cause when you're a teacher and you're just the only adult in the room, sometimes it's like, I just need to talk to an adult, like, have my minutes, so thanks for providing that.
Absolutely.
And that's the, uh, the PBIS team, uh, has a mixture of experienced people, and then, like, there's one first-year teacher you mentioned is on there too, right? That's, that's really news, that deliberate to kind of get the mixture?
Yes, just to bring some fresh ideas, but then also have the historical knowledge of what's been done before, and have that work together to make sure that we're covering all the bases, and not thinking of something that we should've thought of, because I'm hoping those who have been there for awhile are bringing that for us, but then, it's always great to get some fresh ideas.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense, thanks.
Absolutely. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I was kinda thinking about, and, and kinda knew what Nate was gonna be presenting to the staff, and so like the why not Evansville? And so in thinking about that, this summer, I've been kinda thinking about what would be our theme this year. And so I shared with staff that I was thinking about the idea of re- re-rise by lifting others, seeing that kind of went with our mission statement, thriving, contributing, belonging, and then also, you know, Nate's idea of why not Evansville, and how can we support each other? So, um, when we had a professional learning, a first welcome back kind of conversation, that's what I talked to staff a lot about. Um, and I've probably been in edu- been in education way too long, but there were some videos from my past that, and I'm sure you're gonna remember them, but like the video, Every Child Meets a Champion, uh, was, is a great video, so I re- I showed that to staff again, and we really talked about when we're lifting others, we're building that connection, and that's how we can help support each other. And then there was another vid- video, Do You Believe in Me, do you guys remember? So, this little kid, um, talking to a group of teachers, I can't remember where it was, I think it was maybe in Texas, and he was saying to them in his speech, do you believe in me, and then he ended with, do you believe in each other, and supporting each other? So that kind of fit into this whole idea for us of lifting others. Um, so that's kinda how we started, and then I ended kind of that first morning with a challenge to staff, saying, so for this week, you know, think about how can you support each other? And so we, and we really wa- I really wanted to kinda have the conversation be about, of course, lifting our students and our families, but also about how do we support each other and lift each other. So, we talked about for the challenge, how can you lift somebody this week? You know, if you're giving them an encouraging word, or a smile, or even just being there, um, and collaborating with them and showing up for them. That's kinda how we started. Um, and then the, then that, later on in that day, we kind, we talked about some of John Habby's work that Nate had kinda mentioned, and we looked at two of his things. Um, so he, he talks about different strategies, um, he does research around and looking at strategies that are really impactful to teachers' practice, so what teachers can do that will impact student learning. So two of them that I thought, again, kinda connected with what we were talking about was collective teacher efficacy. And when you look at the effect size for that, if it's a point four, that means it can affect, uh, year's growth. Anything above that is fantastic and can actually acceler- accelerate learning. So collective teacher efficacy is really just believing in each other and ourselves, that we have the skills and that we actually can do this, so we can meet that goal of eighty percent of our students, uh, being at grade level in math and reading. So, and the effect size is one point oh one, so way over that point four. So we talked about that, again, about that whole idea of belief, so if we can believe in each other, as we, as we go through this school year and really support each other, and then we, and then I, I shared another one, this one is kind of confusing, it's called Teacher Estimates of Achievement, but it's really teachers using their professional judgment, um, to know like where are our kiddo's, what goals can we set for them, and then as we're, uh, what interventions do we need to provide, or what kind of strategies can we provide for them, and then adjusting as we go. Um, so again, to me, kinda summing that up was sort of this idea of believing in our kids too, so believing in ourselves, that we have the skills and that we can do this, and then believing that our kids can do this as well, if we are using our professional judgment and working together and collaborating. So that's kinda how we started, and then we moved into, um, the teachers had some time to collaborate and think about how they could put some win time into their schedule this year. This is kinda new for most of our teachers, a few people had kinda tried this out last year, but win time being that, that chunk of time, what I need is what win stands for, and so that chunk of time, um, throughout the week where you can provide interventions and challenges and supports, and so at the whole spectrum, so kids that are striving, kids that need additional challenge, how can you provide that to kids throughout the week? So teachers had some time to, uh, one teacher shared that had piloted last year, which I think was really nice and effective, for them to share with the staff what they had tried and what had worked, and then what didn't work for them, and what they learned. And then, um, then we just gave people time to kind of plan for that and use their collaboration time. Uh, for the start of the school year, uh, just like Jeff said, you know, the whole beginning part really is about learning those routines and structures, and with our new third graders coming to Tris, that's always, you know, new for them to learn, and, um, a- and just really fun, and it is really great. You know, open house is always super exciting as well when families came in, and we had a lot of classrooms that had moved, so that was kind of fun, cause I'd say, oh, do you know where your, you know, who's your teacher, oh, so and so, do you know where the room is, and they'd go, oh, yeah, and I'd think, ah, I don't think you do. So that was kind of fun to do too, but it's always great to see families at open house, and we had a really great turnout. And then, um, so then when we started the year, it's also really nice to see, like, you know, our fourth and fifth graders, we just see so much growth from the prior year. Um, and you know, I'm out at recesses, and even at recesses, it's like, oh, yeah, now I remember what, you know, third graders might've had a hard time with this, but now they're in fourth grade and they're just doing a great job, you know, and we felt like our fifth graders, oh, you know what, when you're in fifth grade, we don't, we don't stand there watching play soccer, you figure that out on your own, and then, you know, we can help, we can support you, but so that's just always really, uh, nice to do at the end of the year, and fun, to see how the kids have really grown and how they'll just step into those new ro- new roles. Um, I also went around and visited the fifth grade rooms, and I talked to them about being our leaders, you know, being the fifth graders now. I went to the fourth grade rooms, and we talked about how they have brunch now. That was kinda funny, and then, uh, third graders just welcoming them, so that was one to do on the first day. As a staff, we also made kind of a collective commitment to making sure that we were going to, so we have the matrix like, um, Jeff was talking about, so we have all the areas of the building, the expectations, but we're really committed to, um, making sure that we were all going to be, you know, doing the same thing and have the same expectations, because, you know, as you know, it's tricky when different people have different expectations, and it's tricky for kids, so we really agreed that we were going to make sure that we were all doing that and commit to that this year, um, and that was also a way of supporting each other. So we talked a lot about that, and we're gonna keep doing that, and so far, it's going really well, and the kids are, you know, really learning the structures and routines. Our staff also do morning meetings, lots of community buildings, they've been doing that, um, for the kids as well, and just really building their classroom community. Um, I wanted to just share a couple of things that I heard, well, one thing, Tanner is a high school student, he's a football player. He's been helping out at our recesses, and it was great today, cause he was outside, um, playing foot- football with our fourth graders, and that was just like so cute. And he was showing them, and you know, they still struggle a little bit with football, so it was nice to have like somebody that actually plays football out there, and helping them. Um, and then, you know, we, uh, you know, we always talk about belonging and making sure that kids are seen and heard. And so I had a student, we do birthdays, which I know all of us do, like, celebrate birthdays, and we do the August birthdays at the beginning of the year with the September ones. And I had a little girl come in, and she said, well, for once I wasn't forgotten, cause she had an August birthday, and I thought that was really sweet. Um, and then I had a, a staff member say today, we were doing some, um, professional learning with educational assistance after school today, um, and she kinda made that same comment, she said, no, I don't feel like I'm forgotten this year. So I'm excited about the year, we will be having class this week, so if you have kids, make sure you ask them about that. And that's our belonging learning and sharing together, so that's where we have those small groups, I know I've talked about it a lot of times, but we're starting that this week, so we're excited about that too.
Sorry, um, so Juliana's my oldest, so when, she's in fourth grade now, but third was the first time my daughters had two teachers.
Yes.
Um, and so, um, and maybe parents that their kids, you know, arrive in the academic world, that's, I'm very happy for them, but sometimes my daughter struggles, um, and so, like, for example, we went from math being a problem to reading being a problem, and then it switches, right? My professional side says this might not be able to fit into the schedule of the teachers have going on, but the mom's side of me is, so like, for example, I met, um, oh my gosh, this is Nelson in fourth grade?
Yeah.
Okay, um, but Juliana's math teacher is Mrs. Wild. And so when I'm like, okay, my daughter's struggling, I don't want the first time I meet my daughter's teacher to be at a meeting where she's struggling, and I was prepared because that happened in third grade, but I just remember what that felt like in third grade, and I'm just wondering if there's any way, like, parents, at least third-grade parents could meet four of their teachers, cause it's the first time that that happens. Um, and I know schedule-wise, it's probably, you're probably like, hope there's no way, um, but like, mom-wise, it would've been nice if like, I met both of those teachers, so like, my first interaction wasn't that like, hey, let's talk about what we can do to help Juliana, um, I don't know, just.
Yeah, so I guess at open house, most people I think meet both as teachers, go to both?
I think it was like odd for me, cause we had like a sign-up time, like, when we could come in, and so, like, with my one daughter, so then it was like moving to the other, and so that's why I'm like, maybe it's just like a whole problem, but like, and it's a parent problem, but it was just hard, because then by the time I could've like gone to the But it was just hard because then by the time I could have like gone to that next one, like I felt bad because there were so many parents that that was their actual teacher that I didn't want to intrude. So like I said, it's not like a huge thing. It's just like a thing I noticed. And I don't, I'm not asking for a solution today. I was just, you know.
No, that's a good thing for us to think about. Most of the teams sent home like a letter that was a collaborative letter, which I think was really nice too, so that our parents could hear from both of the teachers. And then, like I said, most teach, most families went to both rooms.
Yeah.
But I can understand how that could be a struggle.
I think it's harder for those families that have more than one parent, you know? It's probably more that than it is a single parent, like single child, sorry. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, I just want to really thank you for this setting expectations, behavioral expectations for the kids that are equivalent across all grades, all of the teachers. That is, it's like, I don't think that I've ever been in a school where that happened in terms of like my own personal experience as a student or my kids' experiences. You know, went through here all the time. This, you know, there's always that easygoing teacher who might let stuff go and there's other that don't have that approach. But if you can all agree on a standard set, I feel like it gives the kids a feeling of safety. I appreciate that. Get this going district wide.
One of the things we talked about is that the students shouldn't have, like, when they move from room to room or teacher to teacher, they shouldn't have to learn a brand new set of expectations. They should be across of buildings that it is the same. And what happens in one is the expectation in another as well.
And you know, it's very, it's hard, right? And I know that we all start our year with that and want that same thing. But what we talked about as a staff is that it has to be all of us together. And I think that's the thing, like it can't just be me holding everybody accountable, right? It has to be, you know, everybody. So we talked about, so, you know, what are we gonna do if, you know, the teacher next to you is whatever? Letting their kids be louder in the hallway and, you know? So how are we gonna approach that? So we've talked about that. And then we're gonna add each staff meeting, kind of check in and say, okay. So, you know, we checked in already at our first staff meeting. Okay, what should we talk about? You know, what's, what are the concerns? What's coming up? And we realized that there was a lot of transition at one time during the day. And so how would we, how are we gonna kind of maneuver that? So we'll, we'll keep on it. It's not gonna, you know, be perfect or anything, but I think it's, it has to be collected. So it has to be.
And once they're the same person, then you feel great, you might have a little more relaxed attitude than if you're starting to come down with something and you're grumpy, you know? So I, I really like that. I feel like it's, everybody gets benefit.
Our son has Mrs. Chippy, one of your new teachers.
Oh, yeah.
Had a really strong start to the year.
So middle school, I mean, I kind of piggyback off of some of the things that Nate talked about because some things, that's really been a huge focus within the classrooms already. And you can see that and feel that when you walk around the building. A lot of conversation about how can we develop our unit plans or to incorporate more of those DOK or the depth of knowledge questions into what we already do. So things might be coming into the classroom and it's a bell ringer at the beginning. Or maybe it's a checkout question at the end of the time. Or with the assessments that we're already doing, can I put this into DIFIT and say, hey, can you reword these questions so that there's depth of knowledge two and three? And teachers using those heat maps too. Mark and I created, and I think Nate may have shared those with you, just one document that has basically everything that a teacher could need and it goes to. And we gave different, and this is for people to view things because not everyone needs to see every grade level. So all of that was very well calculated and thought through to give that to it. And I've had a few teachers come in now and say, hey, I was working with this. I've been going through it. Deb Miller, our health teacher, who says herself like she's not tech savvy, I would push back on that because she's technology a lot, but that's how she feels. But she shared with me before the end of the first day that Mark and I presented, and yes, gave this big document saying, this is what I've done for health class already. These are some things I've done for career opportunities with eighth graders. And I asked her if she would share that at our staff meeting last Wednesday. And she was like, oh, sure. I mean, there's other people that are way better at this. Like, that's not why we're sharing. It's not a competition. And she did share that with staff and it was nice because then she asked questions. Other people could interject things that they worked with, questions that they had. And then she did an example of another one that she could use with sixth grade. So I think it was great just for teachers to see how quickly it went through because we had people that had never heard of DIFIT before. We had had people that, yeah, I've heard of ChatGPT. Some have used it, some have never touched it. So it was just a really nice opportunity for them to go through and focus on what unit am I on? And how can I use this moving forward? And that will be the content area meetings that will meet twice a month at each grade level. They'll also meet twice a month. That will be their focus, using the heat map, seeing the item analysis. And then how do I add this into what I'm doing instead of trying to recreate all new things? So, and I was super proud of Deb for being willing to do that and take that on. And we've done a lot of committee work already as well. So our leadership team has always been very well attended and thriving with all things that need to be happening throughout the building. But we also brought back some other committees this year, which are Sunshine Committee, which is staff focused, things that we can continue to do to help with that staff morale. And is there some fun thing each month? And I've asked them to share all of their agendas with me and their minutes. Can't get all of them, of course, but just looking at some of the opportunities that they're thinking of is really fun. And hopefully staff will get on board with that and want to join in. A fundraising committee, I do not like fundraisers. I'm just gonna throw that out there. And buying pizzas and writing papers is just not my thing. So, I mean, I do it because that's what we all do, but looking outside of the box. So reaching out to Culvers to see if we can get some Scoopy Nights, reaching out to U W Madison, like can we as a staff go help and do some things of that nature? So we're, we're working on that and trying to come up with some other things that kids can do. I told Nate to put a coffee line, every parent can pick up coffee. We actually talked about that as well.
I just have a coffee.
We already have people complaining about drop off.
Okay, fair. Fair.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, maybe, maybe. Started earlier. We have a social media group that's here as well because it's hard for us to just continue to. It's not hard, it's just one more thing to remember to do, right? So it's not, it's not hard, but just to remember it in social media now. That group has something that every week, like this is what we're gonna focus on. These are the things we're gonna do and they're asking for participation. And they're going to go out and take some pictures as well and get that into social media, media. And then Character Strong. So we've had a Character Strong committee for probably six years now. And it's kind of ebbed and flowed and with COVID, that kind of changed some things. And then last year it changed as well because without the additional FIAID teacher, now our students only have forty-five minutes of FIAID and it really messes with our schedule a lot. So teachers now are teaching an extra enrichment time. And it's funny how it all works out, but because of that, we're like, we, we don't have a significant amount of time that we can focus on that character strong, that every kid would get it just on, based on the schedule. So we've come up with a new plan for that for this year and we're excited about that. Bringing back some more of the students that were originally on our Sources of Strength Committee as well. Just like Barb and Jess talked about having themes for the year. Our Student Council always has a theme and they focus on that when they're creating things for the building. So, and for all students. Their theme this year is Blooming with Spirit. And they came in before school and got some things organized. We do birthday boards, all of that kind of stuff for our students, which is super fun. And it was really interesting to me because I changed three of the bulletin boards that were there. And the same posters that our Student Council kids picked were the same posters that I had. So when I talked to the exec committee and I talked to them separately, I was like, you guys have great taste. We're all just thinking alike. And it's wonderful because our theme is going to be Let's Grow. We have a schematic of that right now, but we really want to bring kids into that to say, how do we continue to do more of the character strong with the sources of strength and get their buy-in? So Let's Grow for us is going to not only be academic, but also challenging kids and staff to do things that they may not have done in the past. So that was one of our staff meetings. It was actually part of our get to know you thing was to share something that you have either, one, you're proud of yourself for doing because it was outside of your comfort area. Or two, it's something that you want to challenge yourself to grow to. And then we put the, we wrote it on a leaf and we put that up on the bulletin board. So right now, the students don't all know that those are staff. They're going to be learning about that soon. And then eventually, our kids will be adding their, their things, what they want to grow. And we hope to reach families that way too, saying, these are some things, like give your kids some autonomy to try some new things. Because in sixth grade, that's the time we need to start helping some of that grow. And that's one of the things that Scott Kramer, the Dean of Students, and I talk about on that open house night. We take the first twenty minutes to talk with families. And in that time, I tell them, you are not going to get as much communication as you've gotten four K through fifth grade. And that's intentional because we want kids to start to grow that independence. And we want kids to be talking to you and saying, hey, there's a dance on Friday. Can I go to it? And if they say that to you on Friday morning and it doesn't work for your family, tell them no. It's okay to tell our kids no. And next time there's a dance, they're going to ask you sooner. Like they're learning from that. And those are low stakes. Like the kid, of course, is gonna think it's high stakes and probably gonna get some slam doors or whatever, eye rolls. But it's, it's the time that we can, for kids to try some things on their own. And I just, I'm a strong believer in giving kids opportunities to show that they can, they can do things. Goes back to even summer school. The third day of summer school, we're all out, you know, outside. The teachers were all out there the first two days to walk the kids in. And on that third day, it was just the admin that were out there. And a little guy came up to me and he was like, where's my teacher? And I was like, well, do you know where to go? He's like, he just looked at me like, oh my gosh, why are you asking me that question? And he said, oh, yeah, I do know where to go. And I said, well, of course, because you don't need us anymore. You've got this. And he's like, yeah, you do. And he marched in with confidence and went to the classroom. And I mean, had I have cuddled and said, oh, I'll take you there. He wouldn't have felt so confident in moving in. So sometimes I think we're afraid to take those risks. So that's what we're going to challenge our middle schoolers and their families on this year, taking somewhere socially, physically, academically, to what their comfort is. Because of every, everybody's different that way. Our grade level teams have been doing lots of things during team time. We always spend the first two weeks just getting to know one another and to build that camaraderie. We do typically one day a month, we're all run a shortened schedule and we just do some fun activities in the afternoon. And we always end in the gym with all of us together. And sometimes that competition is silly, like you've seen the cheese ball throwing at the base in the shaving room. Today, kids were super excited because today was the water challenge. So if you drove by the middle school around two thirty today, you saw lots of kids outside with cups of water that they're filling in bottles and things. And just little fun things, but it means a lot to our kids. And then they get points up for competition and then they get to pick their color and we make a big deal out of it. They get a cheesy trophy, you know, at the end. But kids really buy into that. So then after we get all of that accomplished and all the rules and the expectations, that's when we'll start working on the Let's Grow project. And I've talked individually to several students to say, hey, I know you've been a part of Sources of Strength in sixth grade, now you're in eighth grade. Is this something that you want to be a part of? And also just talking to some kids that may not always be involved. Because usually it's the boisterous kids that want, that are the ones that are running for Student Council or the ones that are members of GSA and want to do that leadership role or whatever. So looking for some of those kids that are just the quieter leaders and saying, is this something you'd be interested in? And I've got, got a lot of interest thus far, which is exciting. Along with those grade level teams meeting after school, the teachers meet, we'll be meeting two days a month for PLC time. So that will be wonderful collaboration for them to continue to work together. Last night was their first meeting. And based off of that meeting, we've got outdoor day tentatively planned for sixth grade. They've got a Midsummer Night's Dream, eighth grade field trip coming up. So lots of things that go beyond the teaching day that often happens during that time. So it's nice to have that, that built in time. Staff are really excited that the first staff potluck is planned. So that's something that Megan Propper has always done. And this one is like, whatever's easy. So she always has a theme for it and staff were pumped about it. Yeah, yeah, whatever's easy. It's September. And then clubs will be starting soon as well. That'll be within the next two weeks. I've had one sixth grader already email me about setting up a meeting that we could talk about having a club for Dungeons and Dragons. And he knows that, not gonna shout out their name here because that's not fair to the staff member, but certain staff member that also likes Dungeons and Dragons. So their committee is going to talk with, with that staff member to see if they'd be interested in helping them out with that. So I think that's exciting because that's something we talk about. Like, if there isn't a club here that's for you, what can we, what can we bring in? Come and talk to us about it. So we'll see what, what they come back with in a week, when I commute with them again. A couple of things, when Barb talked about hearing stuff. We've got a few new students this year. And one student, I think he must have forgotten my name because every time he sees me, he says, hi, Mrs. Principal. Yeah, so now I've been like, hi, student. Which I think is so awesome. But just saying like how much calmer this school is than the school that they have been to in the past. And I wore that as a badge of honor for all of our staff members. And we'll share that with them as well. And then another student who's in sixth grade, first day lunch. Sixth grade lunch is at eleven oh seven. Okay, so then the two classes and she's like, when are we gonna do the learning? And that's how she looked at me. It's like that, like, when are we gonna do the learning? And like, I know you're tired of hearing where the pencil sharpener is, right? She just laughed with me and joked, but I was like, I promise you, like, today is this going to be a loss. But it'll be okay, your teachers are getting to know you. And then last but not least, it's also very, very important. But as you talk about consistency and within the classrooms and within the school district in general, having more structure within our team time. So setting up, this is what Monday is, this is what Tuesday is, this is what Wednesday. Team time is at the end of the day. End of the day is hard wherever you go. We purposely want it at the end of the day so we're not missing academic time with all of the kids that need to leave for athletics. So it really is a good time for that. But sometimes kids are just ready to be done. And let's be honest, sometimes we are as staff as well. So just having more consistency and non-negotiables is really what we're talking about and setting that up for each grade level. And then the second thing that we talked a lot about was having kids on their technology lessons. Like, let's talk to one another. Let's get back to writing and writing things down in a book and reading a book. And of course, yes, we will supplement with technology when we need to. But we really saw an increase last year with kids that were gaming always. And they're quick, like they can shut down that tab very quickly. And sometimes they don't. They just, and they're like, just one second, I'm almost done. And you're like, oh, no, that's not how it works here. So just, yeah, we all feel that as parents sometimes too, right? I can't pause game, I still don't get that. Yes, you can. Yes.
I'm gonna show you.
Yes, you can turn it up. But in, we're doing like a tiered approach to that. So our sixth grade staff are having Chromebook cards in their classroom. So when kids walk in, they, they put it in the Chromebook hotel and it's there until they need it. Seventh grade, all of the desks were bought intentionally because they have a tray underneath of them. So seventh grade, it goes into that tray. It comes out when you need it, right? And then eighth grade, we're more flexible, like yes, you can have it on your, on your desk, but it's there for when you need that. And honestly, I shouldn't say this out loud, but I thought I would get more complaints from kids. And I haven't heard anything. Maybe they know, then I would just tell them. Maybe they know that I would just tell them, it's too bad that's how it is. But, uh, it's just something that when we, when our leadership team talked about this was staff, a lot of staff were clapping and happy about. Any questions? I know it's all over, so I might have missed something.
A question, but I think it's for you and Mr. Crandall. Um, last year, I think through surveys and then unfortunately through social media, there was a lot of things about bullying. Um, and I'm just wondering, like, how do you start the new year? Are there anything new? And, and you don't, not need to go into detail at 7:30. But, um, like, very curious as a board member and as a parent, like, what are things that we're doing differently this year to ensure we're not getting those surveys? And there will always be something, right? Um, so I'm not expecting like 99% perfect. Um, but, but obviously bullying comes with safety. And so like, how are we ensuring our students are being, going through a different, maybe different process to ensure that that's okay?
Um, and I'm going to start off with the disclaimer. I think that middle school is where all the hard things happen, right? So, um, kids think about themselves first and they always think that someone is against them or someone's talking about them.
Earlier every year.
That's probably true. So do I think that we're going to see a difference in the survey? Honestly, probably not. But I think our approach is different. And one thing that Mr. Kramer and I have been very diligent about with students, and this has been the last few years, honestly, is telling them like, we can only respond to things that we know about. Because sometimes we'll hear from a parent like, this has been happening since whatever grade. And like, I've never heard this, I don't know about this. So just opening that up to people to come and talk to us about it. And then saying, just being real with parents about, you may feel like this has happened forever, but your kid has only been in middle school for one year. So we don't know this, all of this information. You need to share this with us so that we can go through. And then sharing what details we can share. And then also talking with kids that are involved and saying, you might not see what's happening, but know that we follow up with everything. And I often say to kids, like, I don't have the magic. I can, I'm going to talk with this kid, I'm going to talk with their parents. I'm going to support you in every ways that we can. However, if it continues, you have to be the one that comes back to report this. So then we can go to that next step. Because we often hear, at least at middle school level and others, well, we tell people that they don't do anything about it. Um, and we try to change that to, you don't do anything about it that you might see. Because that's all confidential. I wouldn't talk about you in front of those other students, so I can't talk about them. And then kids are usually like, oh, okay. And also at the middle school level, kids get more attention when they're talking to their classmates and their friends. And you don't get as much, uh, yeah, probably fair. So, and I'm not trying to minimize it, I'm just being real about what really happens. And yes, we, we do anything that is reported, we follow up with it every day.
I appreciate that. And I think it's more of like making sure our parents understand that. Because our kids will probably get, will like get to know us and like, will be able to do those things. It's our parents that will struggle with the, but why can't I know? Or, you know, I don't understand how we're fixing this and really getting on their level of like, I can't give you all the information, but let me tell you what I can tell you in making that time for them. Because I think sometimes it's just knowledge is power sometimes.
Everything laid out in the consequences section in the middle school.
Parents are not reading.
Such a thing?
It is.
Just the consequence?
They're absolutely, that is absolutely true. Parents are not, no, no, I believe that that's the best option. Well, they're filed.
Oh, well. They're for them to read as well.
There's always nuances that go with things too.
All right, I will try to go quickly. But, uh, so we spent a lot of time at high school in our professional development, talking about data and how we're going to use data with us getting the methodized and diving more into our ACT, pre-ACT scores and the board exam score. So most of our time was looking at the data, giving the staff the data. So Mark and I took in the data that the CISA guy gave us, which was unbelievably large amount. And we tried to pare it down into a meeting sheet that they can look into and have a quick reference to uh, when they're looking through stuff. So we, we kind of talked a lot about the data, how we're going to use the data, that, how we are going to use AI to help us ask better questions so that the students know what the test is asking them. So we talked, um, and Mark did a great job of letting staff know like, we know they're teaching really good things and they're teaching the right content. We just aren't teaching our kids how to answer the questions correctly. Because we don't know, the kids don't know what they're asking on some of the ACT questions because of how they're worded. Um, so we talked, we talked about how we got to focus more on how we are asking questions of the content we're already teaching as opposed to necessarily teaching the content differently. So, um, AI is great for that where you can say, hey, this is what we are. How can I use the different, you know, depth of knowledge questions? How can I use ACT style questioning? How can I use it within the sub-score or the subsect within the ACT? Depending on how deep into data we're given. So we spent a lot of time just wrapping our heads around all the data, how we can use it. And that kind of the, the challenge we gave them or what we, we are looking for this year from our staff is that they're using ACT style questioning multiple times a week within their lessons throughout the day. So that kids can just learn, this is what the, the question is and this is what I need to figure out from the information I have. And it doesn't matter what the content is, the question is the same. So it's picking out that style question and say, okay, now I know what they're asking me. How can I take away some of these answers that are wrong? Or how can I figure out what I need to answer? Because I understand what they're asking me as opposed to just not knowing what's being asked because you just aren't used to that style questioning. So that's what we've been focusing on the high school, um, with. And I'll give you some, you know, data. I know a lot more of the freshmen than I typically do because my son's in that grade. So I, I will ask them questions earlier than I probably would of other freshmen that don't know them. And I just asked some of them yesterday how the pre-ACT went. Um, a lot of them said math is math. They can all figure, they can all figure out how to do a math problem because it doesn't change. But they said, yesterday we did English and a bunch of them said, I just didn't know what they were asking me. And they're like, so, and then their, their words are, the test is stupid. I didn't know what they asked. And I said, no, the, the test is fine. You just don't understand what they're asking you. It's not that you don't know it, you just don't understand how the question is worded. And they're like, well, you're, yeah, that makes sense. So I think the, the continuing to remind our staff as the year goes on and we're developing that, the kids do, our kids are, in our district are great kids. They want to do well on stuff. It's just we need to give them that information and that tools on how to decipher what the question is asking them so they can do well on the test. Um, and then we spent a lot of time talking about methodizing, how we're going to use that. And then also how are we going to continue to keep students motivated to continue to plug along on that? The laws start out strong, but by December, some of them are not going to be real interested on doing their Monday morning methodize. So that's other stuff we talked about is how do we keep that momentum going, um, through that. So one thing, um, we do every year is Kim and I and Kendall is usually there as well. We meet with every grade level one day, um, on each day and flex and kind of go over the overall building expectations and then the consequences that we will do at high school when you don't follow those expectations. So we kind of go through that. And then this year, we, we went through those a little quicker because we wanted to talk more about the importance of testing and why we are using, using methodize and why their ACT score is important or can be really important depending on where they go. And we went from how an apprenticeship you may have to take it or if you even have a job that has nothing to do with anything you think you'll ever going to need schooling for in a couple of years, they want you to go back and get some training. And that technical college might need you to do a placement test. Or they'll ask you, what was your ACT score? And you may have to not have to take a placement test or get taken out of classes you don't have to take. So we talked about how you don't know where you're going to be in three, four, five years. Why not here when you have to be in school? You do the best you can on these exams so that you, if you have to use that exam later, you have the best score you possibly could and that may help you. Um, and the kids who are college bound, understand it right away. They're like, I want to get the highest score possible so you can get it anywhere you want. So those kids aren't hard to motivate. It's our, our kids who think they're never going to use the test score ever again. And I, I gave an example to all the kids of, we had a student, uh, this summer who called and asked for his ACT score. And over his four years in high school, he probably said every day that he was never going to college. He's never going to do anything besides go to work after high school. Why does he have to take English class? Why does he need social studies? Those things aren't going to help him do what he needs to do. Well, he called this summer and said, can I get my ACT score? My company wants me to go back to school. And then I get paid more. And we're like, well, yeah, we can do that, but you may not be happy with the score you, the effort you put in during your test. But, so we gave that to the kids and we talked to staff about that. How kids don't know, even the ones who are hardcore, I'm never doing anything. It's still beneficial for them to do the best they can. So it's just trying to find motivation for all of our students to, to understand why we're doing it and continue to put in that effort and try on exams and tests when we're going through.
That's really important. I feel like when I was a kid, that was really missing from my school experience. And I really appreciate hearing that.
So that is the main stuff. I, I do not have a theme like some of the other buildings talking about. The biggest amount of eye rolls and groans. Theme out. So I stay away from that. But otherwise, it's been a great start to the year. The kids, um, yesterday did well testing. We had a few, we had always issues with testing. And what was unique is even though this is through ACT and it's the same questions as we do in the spring, when you have to do it is they use a completely different system to test for this one than you do for that one, which baffles me. So we had to, the staff had to learn a new system basically on how to do this in order to test, which, you know, like I said, I don't understand why ACT does that, but they did. So that was what we spent some time on. So once we got those kinks out, everything went good. Nothing to complain about. They're starting to prepare for homecoming. That's the next thing that'll be coming up already.
Yeah, an important question that I'm wondering.
I got a great answer.
I think it's very important that you have discovered that the kids don't understand a question and, and a content they've been taught in is, is worded or phrased in a different way. And I wonder how deep that goes. How, is this a district wide issue for all of the grades that are testing? Because, and I just wonder how in the world did you ever figure it out?
CISA guy helped us come to that realization. I can't claim all that. But it, it makes sense because when I talk to the freshmen, in ACT questioning, I'd say from my experience is different than forward questioning. I feel like forward questioning is a little more.
For younger.
We would see in a classroom. ACT for a lack, I feel like they try to trick the kids. A lot of the ways, it's like choose the best answer. And sometimes it's one answer, sometimes it's two answers or some, or, or choose the, and what does best mean? Like, it doesn't mean like, there could be two of them that are correct, but one of them they feel is better than the other one. And so it's not like you're wrong, but you are wrong as far as how they score it. So there's some of that stuff that we just have to teach them, like, and figure out how to decipher what they really ask. So I think the ACT is a little different than forward. I can't speak because I don't look at boarding forms at the lower levels because we.
Both are good skills to have otherwise, not just for testing.
Yeah, I, it's critical. I don't think anyone's ever said that that could be a significant issue. And I, I really think that delving into that and figuring out how to instruct in that language of the kids.
That's why we've asked all staff members to do it. So it's not just our core area. Like, um, I know our, our tech teachers, I was going through them on how they can use it in tech ed. And we asked them to focus on math questions because there's fractions. So they can go in and put, in your welding class, in, you know, I'm going to be welding. How can I use this as an ACT style question using fractions? And it'll spit out a question with the answers and the explanation for them. So then they can have that as a warm-up, a bell ringer within their tests that they're giving in. It helps that kids understand, you know, exactly what it is. And they see it all places throughout the day and not just in your core content areas. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Next summer school, I want to report.
Hello? Uh, in, in Board Docs is my summer school report. And it's, it details each of our summer school programs. I just wanted to highlight a few specific things. Number one, um, our staff, we, we began in mid-June. We went right up to the tail end of August as staff is coming, reporting back to work. And none of these programs work if we don't have staff members that are, are interested in diving in. So we, we had a lot of, a lot of interested staff members, a lot of staff members that have been doing it for a long time and some that are beginning new. So I, I just want to thank them all, um, right up from, all the way from Levi to the high school. We had staff members be a big part of our summer program. Um, a couple of other pieces that I wanted to mention is our, our summer reading program. We've kind of been putting that together over recent years and continuing to grow it and add new pieces. What I was excited about is we had, we had three options for families, you know, and that's specific to K5. When I say three options, there was a June session, kind of an extension from the school year. August session, it's kind of a, start a new school year. And we embedded a session right in July in our, in our K5 enrichment program as well. So when students are coming and taking four classes, one of them would be the reading class and three others of their choice. So, um, we were pretty excited to continue to grow that. Um, I'm hoping we continue, continue to grow it in the sense of more students, more staff, more opportunities for kids. Um, so that was, that was pretty exciting. And the third piece I wanted to mention is the, the middle school, summer school program. Um, we started out this year with four teachers and four classes. It was pretty cool knowing Mr. Bosco's class was heading to the park to do some experiments. I could see him walking over here to the school forest right out my window. Um, that was pretty neat. Senior Hefman talked about how much he appreciated the opportunity to teach Spanish over the summer, especially after a challenging year where we, we lost that programming for, for some students. So it, it was pretty cool. I worked closely with Mr. Butch and, um, you know, there were, there were four periods. But on that, on that document, it shows five different options. Because, uh, Mr. Butch was able to get Papa embedded into that as well. So students had some options there. If they wanted to be a part of Papa, they didn't have to miss out on it during that timeframe. So those are, those are the three that really stood out to me that were a little new and different. We want to certainly continue to grow the reading program, grow all these programs. But, um, I look forward to watching the, the middle school program continue to grow. Maybe more offerings, more staff. So, um, it was a good summer and, and we were busy from beginning to end. And then came the PD days.
I look forward to seeing the numbers in terms of planning. I feel like this is probably the highest participation we've had in summer school.
And Mark and I have talked about the key to growing that is, again, do we have staff are going to offer different courses so that they're not taking the same class year after year? If we have more variety, that will bring kids in.
If you like Lego challenge, you could run every year. And then, and then edible art. Yeah, that one fills up in a hurry.
Thank you. Budget finance, August finance summary.
I'll pass it over to Eric. Uh, one thing that we will talk about and is on our, um, I know Eric will mention it. We'll have a guest at our next meeting, Steve Eager from Lake Ridge Bank, is, uh, the transition from what we've typically done with short-term borrowing, which is borrowing money over the course of an entire year and paying interest on that whole time. Uh, typically, you're going to take a larger amount as well to a line of credit, which, the way that Eric operates, and I know I've, I've already heard Mark and Janessa talk about claiming grants much earlier in the year. So you get that money right away rather than waiting to the end, which then allows you to obviously recoup some of that revenue earlier and going to a line of credit, which might be a slightly higher interest rate. But because you can pay that back, um, maybe within a month or two, once we get through our lean times, after we get our state aid and our, um, local property tax revenue. And so Steve's been good about setting that up at a very good rate. And, um, and I think what you'll see is, you know, you're, you're going to pay a lot less in interest, which is the fiscally responsible thing to do. So I'll pass it over to Eric.
So with any kind of short-term lending, um, you could take a look at what was called fund balance versus our balance in our account and the bank is, and they're very different things. So depending upon the time of year, we get kind of thin with our bank account because we're waiting for funding to come in. So one of the, the tactics I've done, just like Nada said, is, uh, we've got our, our grants in and budgeted for. And then we're just waiting for approval for these things so we can start to claim on those. So the first time we'll claim is probably at the end of September. Um, and then we can get those funds usually within a couple of weeks. And that'll help us with our cash flow issues that every school sees. So it's a, it's a good thing with this, um, line of credit, we will only take the money that we need when we need it. Uh, and then we will pay it back normally in January. And in February, we get those, uh, tax payments in. And then we'll be able to pay that off so that interest is only there for a few months versus the 12 months that we paid before. Uh, the interest rate is, it would be under 7%, you know, which is very good for the environment that we're in right now. And so our partnership with, uh, Lake Ridge Bank is, is continuing to, to grow. Other things that I've been doing this month, uh, besides, uh, getting those grants, um, in so that the budgets can be approved for those, uh, I've been taking a look at our.
I've been taking a look at our budget, trying to balance that with our special ed and making sure that every year that zeros out, so we have a transfer from our Fund 10 to support Fund 27. We're gonna be about three point one million dollars in that transfer this year, which is, a good thing means we're spending about the same amount, if not a little bit more than we did last year. So we're just continuing to work towards that. Other things I've been doing is, is chasing quotes for things for the roof, things for the concrete. With the roof, it's not just the roof, it's actually the mechanicals on top of it, having to raise those up and then be able to rub out over it and then connect and, or disconnect and reconnect all those units.
Plumbing and electrical.
Plumbing and electrical.
Our solar panels have, the, let's claim on that. So that will be covered, and then you have to wait until you do that roof project before you bring, bring those back. I don't know, I don't think you've seen this, but everybody obviously lived through that here in Evansville with the hail damage. It's incredible to go up on that roof and you'll see all of these panels, you'll have two panels right next to each other. One's been hit seven times and the next one right next to it, now one hit. And that, I mean, you can see that on our roofs as well, so it's, it's, it was a crazy storm.
Does the insurance only cover those solar panels, solar panels one time, lifetime?
That, we haven't been told, they'll, they'll definitely replace the ones that we have. I'd have to check with John Gibson.
The reason I was asking is obviously everyone's gone through, but, yeah, it was like a whole thing because they only, they, they'll cover it for a one-year ti, like a one lifetime. And then it's, you, you have to either, you can take the choice of paying it now or you can take the choice of doing your insurance and then not being able to get it covered fully again.
No, there's one thing, if, if taking them off the roof.
Is that what that is? Okay, so actually paying to take it off the roof, got it.
So how often do you take those off the roof? You don't only.
But you never have to do that again.
Right. Any questions for me? Otherwise, you know, it's pretty much status quo moving forward. Working with the state, I called our DPI, reps are, our aid certification's good, and so we're moving forward with their annual reports and our audit. So I'm just waiting for auditors, I had good conversations with them, and so I'm looking forward to seeing more from them coming in the next few weeks.
When you put in here the significant amount of year-end cleanup, is that like the norm or is there more than the norm going on?
There's, there's a certain amount of things we have to do every year. When I came in here, it's getting to know the system here, but also taking a look at our grants and cleaning up some of those things. We can't claim more than what we, we have a lot of.
Pretty standard.
Some of the, some of the standard things, yes. Other things that will, other entries will probably be made is the auditors usually come back and say, you have to do this, this, and this, so make it.
No messes, that where you have a worry?
We're, we're, we're getting through everything and cleaning up again, absolutely. For next year, I think we mentioned this before, Jody and I have worked on making sure that with the transitions and all the new employees that are here, that they're being coded to the right places. And so that's, that's pieces of what the auditors would want us to do as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question about the fund transfer from Fontana to Font 27.
Yes.
It's expected to be three point one million?
Yes, next year.
Right, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, yes.
That's been like two and a half in the past.
Last year was just over two point eight million.
Oh, okay.
And then every year it does grow a little bit more, depending upon the funding.
Well, especially considering the fact that allegedly they're needing special ed, I cost aid here than normal.
And that's a separate application that we.
Any other questions?
Now moving on to consent, do you want anything removed? Now entertain a motion. Who consent?
To approve consent, agenda items A through B.
Motion, is there a second? Second is full. Motion carries seven zero consent. Gary's next future agenda, does anybody want anything changed?
I will note, there's probably already gonna be a few changes. I did have with Griffin and Jake, TC Networks may want to switch their presentation to October eighth. So that may, that may just be delayed a bit. Remember, we do have the board walkthroughs on the twenty-second, and then we have a communications committee meeting on the twenty-third. And I, Eric and I had mentioned the facilities and finance, the three board members, again, that's Melissa, Seth, and Mitch. We would like to meet as two dates that we have open that Mike Hutchinson from NAMI might be able to make. One would be next Wednesday on the seventeenth, the other one would be Monday, the twenty-second. Does either of, or both of those work for the three of you and we'd set that up? Seventeenth or twenty-second.
Second works better for me.
Spend all date here.
That work for you?
Yeah, I can make twenty-two.
Melissa, twenty-second?
Anything for Seth.
It's gonna be a five-thirty meeting.
And make five.
Yeah, we can do five this time. Fantastic.
Any other comments on the future agenda? Let's entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is there a second? Second is full.
Pete is ready to go. Senator Redd is gonna yell at me, it's not up there.
Motion carries seven zero, we're adjourned.